The October meeting of the Monroe County Board of Public Library Board of Trustees. So to begin with, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves and if we care to, share a book that we're here reading. So Chris, we want to start with you.
Sure. I'm Chris Hall and I am reading, I'm almost finished with The Switchboard Soldiers and Jennifer Chia Verney, I think is how you say her last name. Really great story. It's a story about the telephone operators who helped in World War I.
I am reading a book called The Sun in the Void and it kind of takes South American folktales and interweaves it in kind of a fantasy kind of story. So it's interesting.
I'm Jamie Burkhart and I've just started Democracy Awakening by Heather Cox Richardson.
My name is Chris Harrison and I'm reading something called, I think it's like the Mystery Library, the Library Mystery, something like that. And then I'm also listening to The Sisters of the Marsh.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm reading a cultural biography of Mozart by Robert Gutman and our family is 100% into Minecraft building of historically significant structures as a part of our homeschooling program. So the Taj Mahal in pixelated blocks is an interesting challenge.
I'm David Ferguson and I'm reading Die with Zero, which is a lot better than I thought it would be.
I'm reading Ross Gay's new book, Book of Delights More, Book of Delights or Book of Delights More Essays. It's a beautiful book. We all need some delight in our lives today.
Good evening. The show, Whitney Wash, and I am torn between two books right now. One is Adversity for Sale by Jay Jenkins and then another one that just dropped yesterday that I'm nerding out on audiobook is Worthy by Jada Pika Smith.
So we'll begin this evening by looking at our consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items which include the minutes of the September 19th public hearing on the budget, the minutes of the September 19th regular board meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, personal report, and the board meeting calendar? Questions or comments?
On page 19, I think it was line 1280, I always just look for patterns in the budget. And it looked like experts, we had a negative 622.7% remaining. I'm guessing that we spent a lot of money on experts in the building of the new branch.
Gary, you want to speak to that? Thank you, sir.
Part of what's causing the difference in the actual and the budget is that when we did the budget, we did it before the compensation study. And then we moved between the classifications, quite a few bodies, and changed the classifications, which means the budget numbers just aren't matching up at all. We almost have to go by totals, but that's...
I just look for patterns and when I see something that pops out, I just...
Normally, that would be an indication that something's going on, but it's just an unusual year for wages and the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, I had another question that might change you as well. So on page six with the financial report comments, when it looked, when we looked at revenue, I noticed that the budgeted revenue for investment income was 15,000, but the year-to-date is actually 213,465 dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct and we needed that this year, yeah.
We're running behind on our property tax receipts. Is there a particular reason for that or just...
Yes. The reason is the problem last year, when we adopted the budget and we had the discrepancy and so the penalty cost us. And that's why you see that.
That's a good thing we're getting that investment income then. Okay.
Contribution Insurance, it's line 1240 on page, what are these page numbers? Doesn't have a page. Looks like it's about 19, page 19 of the packet. And when you look at year-to-date, actual 23 versus 22, it's 852,000 to 668,000. Seems high. I know sometimes like we get a month ahead on a payment.
One reason is that in September 2022, the health insurance bill for that month got paid the following month in October.
So you're saying when I look at 22, I'm behind...
The 9,800 dollars you see in the September 2022 column? So that's part of the reason. And then the other reason is we have more employees and the change in rates.
You have more employees. I figured all that, but it was a substantial difference, more than probably would be accounted for by that. But I do see now that only 9,000 was paid in September.
Yeah. And next month, you'll see about, well, probably 180,000 or 150,000 on that line for last year and a normal 94,000 or so for this year.
I'm kind of like Chris, just looking for, or Gary, looking for disparities.
The page numbers get sort of buried within all of the digits when we're looking at the financial report.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's labeled that. Oh, it's, I see it now. 18.
18.
Yeah, right between them. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we're going to have the monthly director's report from Greer.
Sure. Josh, could you come over and real fast? Sorry. Got a dead iPad on our hands. Do you know if we have any chargers upstairs we can grab or an extra iPad? Oh, great. Thank you, Deb. Thank you.
As soon as I ask a question, I'm dead. No, it's absolutely not.
No, that's okay. Deb's got it. Thank you anyway. Okay, so for last month, overall collection use continues to increase this year, though we saw a slight dip in the September numbers compared to August. The average collection used for 2023 is stronger than it was in 2022, which is always what we want to see. We've recently upgraded our circulating Wi-Fi hotspots to 5G from 4G through our contract with T-Mobile. And I reflected on this. We've actually quintupled the size of this collection over the last five years due to its popularity. We are developing our partnership with Bachelor Middle School as librarians, teachers, and administrators are connecting on many opportunities. The faculty are bringing students over for structured visits. The after-school crowd is enormous and energetic. And I want to thank our Southwest Branch Manager Kathy Riley and her outstanding team, including librarians, library assistants, material handlers, security staff, and custodians. They're connecting with patrons on the hour. They're handling an increasing number of holds and checkouts. They're working with Bachelor students within the teen space and really throughout the entire building and the grounds and overall managing our new branch brilliantly. And speaking of Southwest, we coordinated an exciting photo shoot of the branch for the purposes of marketing, posterity, and eventual submission of this building project to numerous library and architectural publications in the near future. We engaged an architectural photographer from Chicago for a two-day shoot and are eagerly awaiting the finished results. Our business partners at Matthew Architects, RJE Furniture Design, Educational Furniture Library Shelving, and others have all agreed to split the cost of this photo shoot since they will also benefit from these publicity photos. So we're excited to see those. We're in the draft stage of our new strategic plan and will be sharing the strategic planning team's work with our leadership team tomorrow during our monthly meeting. And then we will bring a full draft plan to our November board meeting for discussion and then the final plan to the December meeting for adoption. So we are on track for that. And finally, we were honored as one of the best places to work in Bloomington at this year's Community Innovation Awards Ceremony. And we'd like to thank you all as our board for having been a big part of that best place to work piece in granting your support and approval for last year's compensation plan changes, including our health insurance plan changes, because we know that this has made a huge difference for a lot of staff.
Any questions or comments for Greer?
When you're working with the Bachelor students and stuff, do you work with the, you know, the practical arts or home act teacher and utilizing that kitchen for after-school program ideas with those?
I don't know if that's come our way yet. Do you know anything, Josh?
I think it's called Family Consumer Science. I'm not sure what it's called anymore.
Yeah, beyond the initial tour that Greer did with the staff, we've just been kind of doing one-offs as they reach out. There hasn't been a program yet, but we're in the early stages definitely of connecting and with the librarians as well.
Just a real quick kudos to the Southwest Branch. I've been spending a lot of time there and the staff, every last one of them have been amazing. I also have been there when those Bachelor kids have come in and just watching them enjoy the space. I mean, they really, it's theirs. They own it. And so for them to feel at home at their library is amazing. So, great job. I mean, I love the downtown location too, but kudos to Southwest Branch. Kudos to this branch. So I attended a workshop hosted by Indiana Recovery Alliance here, I think it was a week ago maybe, and how informed all of the staff were about the workshop location, who to connect to. They were incredibly helpful. We had a tech issue in the room during the workshop and staff immediately came in and were incredibly kind and resourceful so that we could continue enjoying the session. So, kudos to the team here as well.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the old business portion of our meeting. And so for that, we'll begin with the fiscal year 2024 budget adoption. We are finally ready to vote on this. So do we have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget?
Some.
Okay, and Gary's going to wrap it up again. Go over it one more time.
So, last month at the public hearing, we went over the 2024 budget numbers in some detail. Tonight, we have the final step of the budget process, which is the approval of the adoption form. The budget adoption resolution is on page 100 of the packet. The first column on the adoption form shows the adopted spending budget for each of the library's funds. The total spending for all the funds is 12,759,387. The second column on the adoption form is the budgeted revenue from the operating fund tax levy and the debt fund levy. The operating fund tax levy is about 7,660,000 dollars and the debt fund levy is about 903,000 dollars. The third column on the form is the tax rate. The combined operating fund and debt fund tax rate for 2024 is 8.53 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Are there any questions on this form?
If I go back to the, I may need a page number. Page number 106, because this shows like the breakout of the budget. So something I noticed that I didn't ask earlier is we've spent 852,000 through September on insurance, but the next line over says our budget is 820. And we've only budgeted 831 for 2024?
So there's another line for the employee withholding.
No, I know, but it's, okay, now I'm going to have to go back to page 19.
But anyway, so the total of the cost for the library is the net of the, is the net of the two amounts. And so when you take the 852...
So you're showing the gross expense and then you're subtracting out...
Yeah, breaking out the withholding.
This works better with paper. Well, I was on a different number and someone would have to remind me that. But yeah, page 18 was the original where I looked at it. And if you look at line 1240, it says our budget for the year is 820,000 and we've spent 852.
And the withholding, I don't have that page in front of me, but the withholding under...
Says 182,000.
Yeah, so...
So you don't budget the withholding?
I don't separate the two for the budget. I...
So you're saying that our budget for the year, well, I don't understand that because if our budget for the year is 820, but in the same line, right next to it, you've got 852. It shows we're over budget.
But the 852 has, you have to adjust that for the withholding from employees.
Now, why wouldn't I adjust the budget? Because you're not spending that money. The employees are paying part of it. That's like saying, I've got a budget 120%.
The budget is based on our cost less what employees pay.
So you're saying that 820 is where we'll end up at the end of the year?
Yeah, well, yeah.
But when we look at it on the sheet to see how we're doing, it doesn't help. I see the total budget for the year and then I look over at the year-to-date actual and you like to see, for example, our perf. We estimate it'll be 119,000 and year-to-date through September, it's 89. Looks pretty good, about 10,000 a month.
So I think what you're saying is you'd prefer to see the budget for health insurance broken down into two lines. One is the gross cost and one is the withholding.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Because, yeah.
Next year.
Because I want to compare, I mean, I like to quickly look at it and say, how are we doing so far? Should be nine 12s, right?
Right.
In every category, you should be nine 12s. And then we're saying, yeah, except health insurance, that's different. How many others are different like that? Is health insurance the only one that's like that?
That's the only one I can think of off the top of my head that's like that.
So I found the one.
Employee doesn't pay into. That's where some of the money's coming from.
Right.
Well, we have an employer, we have employee contribution perf, employee perf. Do we do that differently?
Pardon?
We have employer contribution to perf and employee contribution to perf shown on lines 1230 and 1235.
Yes.
So that one, we don't do like the insurance.
Well, there's no withholding there. The library pays...
Just takes it straight out of the check and puts it in.
Yeah. The library pays for both on the perf.
But you're not still withholding the insurance. Like you withhold it for a while and then you pay it, right?
Are you talking about health insurance?
Yeah, health insurance. Sorry, I jumped back.
So we pay Anthem and then the withholding comes in as a credit against that expense.
Right. So we're paying Anthem the total. Okay. All right. Yeah, I think it's a little confusing the way it is. Because when I looked at it after I asked my first question, I'm like, heck, I got a bigger question. We blew our budget. Happy to hear we did.
We can change the way we do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything else, Gary, that you need to share? Is there anything else you need to share about the budget before we vote?
Oh, I'm going to pass this around. Please sign it.
Okay. All right. So, all those in favor of approving the fiscal year 2024 budget adoption, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay. Next, we have another action item about regarding the News Bank Herald Times archive subscription. Do we have a motion to approve this archive subscription?
Second.
Okay. And then Greer's going to just give us some more information regarding this. We introduced it last month, but we got some more information for this.
So yeah, following our discussion last month, we circle back with News Bank reps on the questions posed regarding licensing, archiving, backing up of the Herald Times historical content, some questions about coverage gaps in the digitized collection and of course, the formal quote and contract for this collection. So tonight's packet contains both the general News Bank subscription agreement for Access World News as a platform and the Herald Times Historical Archive. The total cost for the archive, again, is 284,526 dollars, paid annually in 56,900 increments as described in the pro forma invoice. The News Bank subscription itself is not up for renewal until February of next year, but we ask them to give it to us as part of this agreement just for our references purposes. As we shared last month, we know our community is eager to see MCBL play a central role in providing access to our newspapers' archives. And our friends at the State Library have provided valuable guidance on incorporating this resource into our existing digital news archives platform. So with your approval, we're looking to sign this Herald Times archive agreement and open the access to the archive to the public. Our plan would be to test the access links one more time, further review the collection and access details with our staff, and then turn access on for the public all within the next three weeks.
Can I ask a question?
Sure thing.
I see that they're a Delaware corporation with their principal place of business, their principal place of business on Pelican Bay Boulevard, Naples, Florida. Hope that's not where they're storing all the...
No, they have redundant archives in multiple cloud locations.
You can't think of a worse place to keep your data center. Maybe that's just the home office. That's just, yeah, I'm sure it's in the cloud and that's the home office. Maybe paying them too much.
Well, they certainly have an interesting business history in terms of development and acquisition. And then their standing within this particular field is pretty unique.
Comments for Greer? All those in favor of approving the News Bank Herald Times Archive Subscription signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And next, we're going to hear from Becky Throckmorton. She's got an update for us on the 2024 benefits and open enrollment.
All right. So we're excited to welcome our partners from JA Benefits. We have Alyssa here in person and Corey is on Zoom. I don't think you can see his face, but he's there. I have the pleasure of working with JA Benefits on an annual basis all year around and you guys get to see them once a year. They have been working very diligently on our renewal for our insurance. And before I turn it over for them to talk about the renewal, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the big changes that we made last year. We moved away from SIHO to Anthem, which was a big carrier change. Staff have been very appreciative of the Anthem network, the access to information, the ability to get care. And the benefits package that we offer has definitely been a key to us being an employer of choice and as Greer mentioned, being named Best Place to Work. So with this in mind, I'll turn it over to Alyssa and Corey. Hi, everyone. As Becky mentioned, my name is Alyssa Prince with JA Benefits and Corey is online as well. So you might hear his voice come around every now and then. Appreciate you all taking a few minutes for us tonight. This is our quick agenda. Won't take us very long to go through, but please feel free to ask questions as we're going as well. To start out with, I'm going to pull up our Evolution Dashboard. So on our Evolution Dashboard, this is just something that we review with the group on a regular basis, usually during our four meetings per year and update it regularly as needed. But what I primarily wanted to point out in this meeting was the renewal history over there on the left-hand side. That just kind of shows you all the history of the renewals since JA has been with the library. So we put in the original renewal plus the negotiated renewal, just to kind of give you an idea of where it started and where we were able to end up. You can also see when the transition happened to SIHO and then last year, the transition to Anthem. So as you guys all remember probably, last year, we were able to get a decrease by switching to Anthem. SIHO started out a little bit higher. We weren't able to get them to come down a lot, so ended up working out well to switch to Anthem. For 2024, which you can see on there as well, it started at about a 14% on the initial renewal and we were able to get that to hold to a zero and then have been able to get an additional premium credit that results in about a negative 5% whenever you include that as well. Yes?
What is a premium credit?
It's a great question. So a premium credit is basically a credit on your first bill. So instead of them just saying your overall rates are lower, they just credit that first bill. But whenever you do the math at the end of the year, it comes out as a negative five overall.
To the library or to the employee?
It is credited to the library. Yep, great question. Yep, it just credits on that first bill. Yep. So a few other things you'll see on here is just our annual timeline. Since we're at the end of the year, we're already through a lot of that, but it just kind of gives you an idea of some of the stuff that we go throughout the year with. And then the strategic plan is down there in the corner. And usually that's where we put some of the things that we're trying to strategize on for the year, which as you guys are aware, last year was some of those carrier changes, looking at the new carriers, seeing how we could change the benefits. All right.
Have any influence over changing providers as well? Like are we able to increase the number of underrepresented providers to make this plan more attractive to our employees?
As far as the...
Like medical providers?
I will let Corey speak to that if possible. We, I mean, JA does a lot of work with hospitals and trying to do some direct contracts and things like that, but he could probably speak better to that a little bit on some of the things that we have done.
Yeah, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. On the phone, traveling today, so thanks for letting me zoom in. In general, Anthem has a very broad network and SIHO previously had a network. And most of the time, that is controlled and operated and kind of managed by the insurance carrier. We have done direct primary care programs in the past and the library is participating in that to try to make sure access to care is as accessible as possible, knowing how difficult it can be to get in to providers with regard to representation or potentially which providers are in. With regard to representation or potentially which providers are in-network, I would say Anthem is probably the broadest network in the state, with many, if not all, hospitals in the state included. And then the provider practices are, again, subject to their network terms, but from a representation perspective, I don't know if that answers your question on access or with regard to which providers are actually in-network. So, I'd be happy to take a follow-up question if I didn't quite answer it.
So, that does answer the question, but I'm curious if organizations have a leg to stand on by being able to say, for us to continue renewing with you all, we need you to diversify our providers to better support, like, our employees. But that could be a conversation for a later day.
No, I think it's a fair point, and we can ask Anthem on the network side to maybe provide some of that data. In general, I would say employers, unless you all get together, like all of you in Indiana, and say this is a priority, the, the ability for one single employer to make that difference is probably limited, but it's certainly an appropriate conversation to have around renewal as well as off-cycle. So, we can make sure we ask Anthem about their diversity of providers off-cycle and make sure the team has that information for the coming year. Yeah, no problem.
All right, so Becky has pulled up for us the cost analysis. This is just kind of a condensed-down version of some of the math that we do whenever we go through renewal each year to kind of be able to show you what that initial increase looks like. So, that renewal that you see there in the middle is what the initial increase was, and then over there on the end is the negotiated renewal. So, you can see that initially, that increase would have been around $100,000, and then whenever we were able to get the negotiated renewal, that brings it down as a negative number. So, a couple of things I do want to point out on this. You'll see a few areas that are highlighted in yellow, and those are just some minor changes to the plans this year. Oh, there we go. So, the top part is just the plan names. They just change those year to year, so that's nothing really major. But the, you can see there's, it goes from 3,000 to 3,200, and 6,000 to 6,400 on that middle plan. And that's basically just because of IRS guideline for HSA plans this year. So, anyone that had a 3,000 HSA plan in place going into 2024, those are gonna change. So, that's the reason that one is a little bit different. The other difference you will see is they made some updates to their mail order. So, those down there at the bottom, they've, they've actually lowered the mail order costs for those two plans that have copays. So, those are really the major differences this year.
Is our group plan subject to that? I think it's a federal law that says if they don't hit a certain percentage spent for medical benefits, they have to refund some of the premium.
Cory, I will let you take that one.
Yep, there are generally MLR requirements, so medical loss ratio requirements, where that would be applicable. I haven't seen a lot of them get paid out. I've seen United pay out a few, and typically, they are very small. They are doing it across all their client base, and typically, that happens at different levels, at different size groups. So, in our size, between 50 to 100 enrolled, I haven't seen it a ton. I've seen it in a couple of groups over 100 on United Healthcare. It is tended to be so, so small that it is not even administratively feasible or valuable to send it out to the employees. You just apply it to the next year, or maybe push it towards a wellness credit. So, we haven't seen a ton of those paid out, but in general, the carriers are subject, in the fully insured market, to medical loss ratios, yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Becky, I think I'll go back to the agenda for the rest of it. You're nice and quick with it.
While they're running to that data, I'll just jump in and say that it's not typical to get a decrease and then a zero with a premium credit to, like, two years in a row. I think we're all bracing for a little bit of a, of a different renewal. The claims performance really justified that argument to get you to this rate hold plus a premium credit on the cash flow side. And we will, we've talked to the team at the library about how to manage those increases when they come, because we all know that they have in the past and they will one day come. So, when we have good news, I try, I try to be the bearer of reason to say these are not necessarily things that can continue forever, but I think it's a good second year with Anthem so far.
Yes, thank you, Cory. I do want to mention, we'll hop up to number two for a second, it kind of jumped around a little bit, but on bullet point two there, we just talked about the Anthem renewal, but also you do have your other renewals as well, of course. With HRI, you have your dental and vision, and then with Guardian, you have life, life and disability, and then, of course, you have your Everside Clinic as well. With Guardian and HRI, those are all in rate holds, so no changes there this year. And then Everside generally has a small increase each year, and that is at a 2.6% right now. And then I will go ahead and jump down to the final point there, the compensation disclosure. That was also, I know that you guys all received a copy of that. There's also a note on the bottom of the cost analysis. But what we are requesting there is to change from a percentage-based compensation for JA to a PEPM, so per employee per month. That is generally our standard practice and what we prefer. That way, it's not tied to the premium and to the rates. We don't want to see an increase just because you guys saw an increase. We would rather that come just as regular inflation and things like that instead. So, we are requesting for that to be set at $30 PEPM. That is kind of a standard for this area, or this size of business, usually with Anthem. And also, since last year, there was a decrease, and at that time with SIHO, it was a percentage base. We actually took a decrease when switching to Anthem, because we kept that 3%, took a negative 8% on the premium, so then our compensation went down as well.
So, when you say P, PEPM?
Mm-hmm.
Or do you really mean employee, or do you mean insured life?
It is employee.
So, the spouse and children?
Yep, we don't get anything for them. Yep, that's a great question.
Right now, it's 74? Is that the number? I'm just trying to add up these numbers.
That are on the medical plan?
I think it might be, it might be 90, it might be 92 if I did it correctly.
I'm looking at the wrong columns. Okay, so 92...
I may be looking at the wrong year.
92 times 30 times 12?
Yep.
Versus...
That'd be correct.
What was it this year?
Yeah, 3% of the premium.
What'd that work out to be?
It, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me, but I think it was 23,000, 24,000? Actually, I take that back. I think that was for last year, and this year, we went down to like 20,000. So, we took about a 3,500 decrease this year because of the change in the premium.
This money, we think, looks good anyway, from proposed to what you negotiated, so that's good. But that means your compensation went down. Is that right?
Our compensation did last year, yes.
So, like, i- if they came in and said 100% increase and you bargained it down, if you let it go at the 100% increase, you'd make more money.
But we didn't do that.
So, you have the wrong incentive.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's why we don't...
In general, we have not, yeah.
I get, you're not going, woo, they raised 100%! Good payday for us. No, I get that, but what you're asking for this year, if we're on 92 lives, and that's correct, is 33,120 versus, we think it was 20,000.
It was, yeah, we went from, it was right at 24,000 to 20,000, and then we're trying to get back up to where, yeah.
Is there any way we could have staff come up with a solution that incents them to, you know, have incentive to save us money, but yet, by doing so, would increase their percentage? That's it?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I just thought of it. And maybe they'll have some solutions.
Yeah.
Is it too late if we come back next month and talk about it?
No, we can still come back next month and talk about it. We do have to vote on it next month, but we could certainly...
Compensation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
And just so you guys know, the 30 PEPM is included in the negotiated rate with Anthem for this year. So, if you guys do choose to do that, it's not gonna change your rates for this year.
Is your compensation restricted by any federal laws, or is there anything like that we should know about?
I'm sorry.
Not in general. Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in, Alyssa. The CAA, which is the full document you got, was required by law, so we're probably going beyond the requirement to, one, have it signed, and, two, to include all the ancillary programs in that as well. But in general, the agreements are, our goal is to show you what we get paid and then earn it or out-earn it, which I think is our, what we've proven to do over the years with our rate performance and your rate performance. We don't take full credit for it. Frankly, you have to have good claims to get a good renewal, and when you have bad claims, we all have to manage it. So, that, you know, that's good and bad, but I think a lot of times, people will just get trend renewals over and over if they don't have someone advocating to the market for them, as we have done. So, that's kind of what we've seen, is our comp has not really gone up. When you go back from 2016, from the zero to zero, and then the 1%, the 3%, and then the decrease in 2020, the decrease in 21, and we did have an increase in 22 on rates, but those kind of correlate directly to our compensation not changing since 2016. So, what we've looked up, as the CAA came into requirement, which was really just formalizing under the last Trump, I think it was the last Trump bill, the CAA came in with a bunch of regulation, and one of them was to document transparently compensation in our field. We have always acted in that way and tried to share, hey, here's what we're paid, here's how we're paid, are we earning it? Are we doing a good job? This formalization made us look up and realize, we're doing such a good job. On the percentage-based compensation, we actually aren't taking any increases, but our costs are going up. So, I would say that, that that is kind of what we were experiencing. If anything, the documenting it formally has made us realize we haven't been asking for increases over the years. So, we're trying to normalize that a bit in this year and recover a bit from last year, if that helps answer the question.
It's a great time for you to ask. It looks like you've reduced it four out of the last five years.
I have a question. What was the greatest pain point as we switched from SIHO to Anthem as far as the employee concern? And how did we solve for it?
Yeah, Becky. So, we did a really good job communicating on the front end what was gonna change. JA Benefits came in and did a really good job answering questions for staff, helping them understand how you find your carriers. Anthem is a broader network, so there's more providers. I, I'm not aware of anyone who had a provider they were seeing that they weren't able to continue to see. And then Anthem offers a bunch of tools and resources that SIHO wasn't offering, and so it actually was a net increase and improvement for staff overall.
Okay, so no complaints, we're good.
I've not heard any complaints at all. I've heard really good things from staff, and I've heard really good things about the coverage, the transparency. There's just, it's, there's a lot of things that staff have access to that we didn't necessarily have, just because Anthem is a national brand, and they had some mobile app options and some rewards that just weren't offered where we were before.
Okay, great, that's great.
Not that there were problems with SIHO, it just, there were some additional things that Anthem was able to do that was really beneficial for staff.
Love to hear it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That doesn't go, that doesn't go that way, that all, all the time, so I will give a lot of kudos to Becky and her, the whole team, realistically, because it takes the team effort, so.
Becky does a wonderful job.
As well.
Okay, that was the end of our agenda. Does anyone have any other questions? Or Cory, is there anything else you wanted to touch on that I might have missed? Or Becky?
Nothing for me?
Well, Alyssa and Cory, thank you so much for taking the time to be here tonight, even on Zoom, to assist us with some of these questions and help us understand what we're looking at for next year. So, and thank you for your hard work in getting us to where we are.
Yes, and thank you all, we appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you also, Becky. Okay, next, we have a department update from Adult Services, so Elizabeth.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me time this evening to bring you up to date on Adult Services. We're fortunate to have an extremely talented and dedicated staff. To highlight this, I'm going to speak about each of our librarians and what they have been focusing on over the past year. Of course, I can't detail all of the important work they've done, but I will relay some of the highlights. And please remember, they couldn't get any of these programs off the ground without help from our library assistants. We were very happy to hire Emily Bedwell as our newest librarian. Emily has been very involved with the library's Friends Group and is currently president of the Monroe County Civic Theater, which partnered with the library this month to do readings from banned and challenged books to celebrate Banned Books Week. Emily has also been instrumental with our readers advisory services, including facilitating online requests for book suggestions and working with our very in-demand library tender service. Librarian Jack Kowaleski transitioned to filling our role as nonprofit central librarian this year. He continues to provide yearly programs, like Meet the Funders, as well as developing the collection of materials which are vital to our nonprofit central patrons, and meeting one-on-one with patrons who are looking for help creating or developing their own nonprofit. Jack also plans our music events that happen outdoors in the summer, along with a variety of other programs. Our seed library continues to grow thanks to librarian Maggie Hutt. This year, 10,189 packets of seeds were distributed to community members. Maggie also implements a number of programs throughout the year about seeds, gardening, and houseplants, which attract large numbers of attendees. This year, she also, along with library assistant Madeline Bitter, created a new library book club called Green Peeps, which discusses nature-focused titles and meets at different places like Bean Blossom Bottoms Nature Preserve or Bryant Park. Maggie also coordinates our adult summer reading program. Adult librarian Josh Caswell continues to focus on Level Up and a variety of technology-related programs. Additionally, this year, he began developing programs and services to appeal to what we are calling emerging adults, those patrons in the 19 to 34 age range, which will help to bridge the transition for those folks who are aging out of our teen space and moving into the adult area of the library. These programs have included things like Novel Horizons, a mixed media club in which attendees may read, listen to, watch, or even play a game related to a specific theme, and a fiber arts club in which people may bring their own project or try out a new one each month while enjoying conversation and tea. These and other programs have proven to be very popular with this age group. Christine Friesel, our adult librarian who focuses on local history and genealogy, is working with Monroe County GIS Division to map out the Hoosier Character Project. This historical GIS project brings to life people from Indiana's history. Additionally, Christine facilitated an instructional program for patrons to learn how to use GIS and presented a program to both the Monroe County History Club and at the library discussing the Gilded Age in Bloomington. Please keep in mind that while all the planning, preparation, and execution of these programs is going on, our staff members continue to work countless hours at our public service desks. And I don't want you to think it's just me giving kudos to our wonderful adult services staff, but they are equally appreciated by our community. In closing, I would like to read a few compliments that were sent in by patrons. I want to send in a formal compliment about one of your employees, Josh Caswell. "Over the past few years, I have been a regular user of the Memory Preservation Station. As you might imagine, I have needed guidance and answers to lots of my questions. He has always been patient and willing to help me with any issues I've had. I often tell friends and family, whether from Bloomington or elsewhere, that I love our library, and having access to the Preservation Station and employees such as Josh are some of the reasons I feel this way. I would like to recognize reference librarian Christine for her valuable assistance locating several maps of Bloomington in the Indiana Rim. I appreciate the friendly and efficient service that she provided." And to wrap up, here's one about this year's adult summer reading program. "I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart so much for all the work you all put in for Camp Meth and for including adults. I am almost 30 years old and loved reading as a child, but fell out of it as an adult. This summer reading challenge encouraged me to get back into it, and I was able to read 10 books so far this summer. I will be forever grateful and indebted to the library and look forward to giving back when and where I am able. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions." Yeah, that last one is probably my favorite one. It's a good one.
I just want to say, in my adult life here in Bloomington, lots of years, I have noticed that the adult services has changed and morphed into... I have noticed that the adult services has changed and morphed into so many creative and amazing things.
Thank you, really our staff. When I say that they are dedicated and creative and talented, it's all true. And it's, it's really because of them. I mean, sometimes, you know, they'll come in with these ideas that I never could have thought of. And all I have to do is say, yep, go and do it. And they do. And of course, you know, the Friends definitely supports us financially, which makes it easier too.
Thank you for the time this evening. Thank you.
Encouraging your staff and their creativity and all the wonderful things that you all bring to us. Thank you. Before we get to the public comments section, I just want to make a quick PSA for all of you all. Shortly in a few weeks, Becky should be sending out a survey because it is that time of year that we need to evaluate our director. So the goal is that the survey should be coming out sometime in the next week or two. And we'd like to get you to fill that out as soon as possible so that way we can hold an executive session following the November meeting where we review the information that we've collected, decide upon salary and things like that. Or not really decide upon, I should say discuss, because we don't decide anything in the executive session. We discuss, we're going to discuss those items so that way we're prepared to vote on them in the December meeting. So hopefully that timeline's good for everyone. So be prepared to hang out just a little bit longer in November. And again, the sooner the better as far as gathering the survey information to make sure we get that done all in a timely manner. Since last year, I think it got a little bit hairy towards, we were trying to get things done and got a little bit behind on our timelines. We don't want to have to bring you all in for any extra meetings. All right, so with that, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the board? Any on Zoom tonight? Any on Zoom? Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.